Good evening, I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order. If we could please rise for the invocation by Dr. Will Finnan from Sebastian United Methodist.
As we approach this weekend and its important events associated with Memorial Day, I think it's appropriate, and I hope you will also, that we offer a moment of silent prayer for all those who have given their lives in service to our nation across two-hundred-and-some-odd years. And now will you join me in an attiative prayer? Have mercy upon us, O God, for we are but imperfect stewards of the responsibilities we have publicly sought and which duly now rest upon us. We humbly offer our prayers this evening for the welfare of our community and for each and every person here in Sebastian: residents, snowbird, visitor, potential resident, persons with no homes, persons seeking a new home, those just passing through. Our prayer tonight extends beyond the boundaries of our town as well, for the peace and prosperity, the health and wholeness of communities throughout your creation, across our county, our state and nation, and indeed across our troubled world. By our presence here tonight, we demonstrate our concern and care for your creation, manifest so beautifully here in the way we manage the resources of land, our magnificent waterways, and care for all creatures, including ourselves, whose lives depend upon environmental systems that support vitality and health. For those who care for, protect, and defend the integrity of our environmental home, we ask renewed wisdom and commitment. For those who serve as officers and administrators of our laws, we ask your protective shield in the face of danger and continuing wisdom, especially in those complex situations which portend harm. Tonight and in the days forward, O God, grant this council the personal and collective wisdom to put aside self-interests in favor of broadly constituted common good. May our discussions and debates reflect the positive respect we hold for each other and for you, author of all that is, so we may be faithful stewards of the trust this community has invested in this body. And if it be your will, grant that our decisions be well-informed, fair, and without reproach in all matters, both public and private. Should we fail in these endeavors, grant that our decisions bring no harm to individuals or to our community as a whole. We humbly offer this prayer this evening, grateful for the gifts of your grace, compassion, and unmerited love. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Hill will not be with us tonight.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any agenda modifications?
No.
All right, leads us up, we have a presentation from Dr. Casey Lumsford from Indian River State College.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before the city council. We try to do this annually to give you an update on our partnership here at the Sebastian campus and site. And really, I'm here to thank you for your support. I'd like to also commend Joe and his staff, and thank you for Jeanette and Brendan for the expert help getting our PowerPoint ready this evening. But I'll go through some things that we've been doing and some of the new things we're doing up in Sebastian as we continue to grow. First of all, we want to, our partnership has been able to allow us, the college, to add some new office space and our GED and academic support systems here. We are starting a GED program this summer in the computer room upstairs, and that's a new one for us. They already have fourteen students registered, and why GED? Because those folks will transition into the workforce in most cases, giving them the high school equivalency to do that, but also transferring to some of our college programs as well. We've seen great success in that. Our academic support room is an area where students can receive free tutoring. Now, this free tutor is not just for college students, it can be for high school students, it can be for homeschool students. We provide that at the Mueller campus five days a week, and because of our enrollment, we now have two days a week in the afternoons, and we come up and we do math and English tutoring in the facility. Again, a space that you've provided for us, we appreciate that. We've also increased our internet and Wi-Fi capabilities, so not only the second floor, but also on the ground floor, we have that opportunity for students to use their laptops, their cell phones, smartphones. As we use more technology in the classroom, that's really helped immensely. A couple of years ago was a little bit slow, now it's up to speed and it's doing well. We appreciate that. As I mentioned, computer workstations. This last year, the college paid to upgrade all the computers upstairs. We have twenty brand-new ones, as well as in the teaching area, so we provide those, and that's enhanced the opportunities for those students. And then we've created a meeting and study area. I got to give a lot of credit there to Dr. Katie Knoll, who's our program director for the college, and she's really shepherded the effort in Sebastian. And Katie's passionate about the site, she's passionate about what we're doing up here, and she created some study areas. We've permanently borrowed some furniture from the main campus to make sure that we create those areas for the students to study and do those things. So again, thanks to the support that you have, we're now able to provide extra support for students beyond just teaching classes. Of course, everybody in today's world worries about data and the numbers, and so I want to present those to you now. If we go back to fall 2015, that's the semester that I came as provost, we had seventeen classes and we had three-hundred-and-eighty-eight students participating. Since then, you'll see some steady inclines. We had nineteen classes make in the spring of 2016. Last summer, the 2016, was the first time ever that we've actually had a full summer. Normally, we pay per class, but the enrollment exceeded our maximum, our agreement lease, so we actually paid the full amount to the city council and to the city for that. So it's the first time that we've actually maxed out that opportunity, so we're excited about that. Fall of 2016, this past year, you see the numbers. In the spring of 2017, we had twenty-one classes with three-hundred-and-ninety-eight students. Our goal is very strong and continued growth. We expect to have over four-hundred in the fall, and that's our goal. We think we can achieve that very easily. Because of the sustainability of the program, students are getting used to coming to the campus, and they're not just high school students from Sebastian River High School, they're career changers, they're adults. We're seeing a nice mix of students. Our night classes are stronger and stronger. We're offering four o'clock and six-thirty PM classes Monday through Thursday, and that's the majority of our classes now. We do have Tuesday, a full day on Tuesday and Thursday, from nine AM all the way to nine PM, with only a one-hour break. We have classes running through there. In this summer, we have only four classes so far, but we have eight that are offered Summer B, which is a tradition. In the summer, students, the high school students particularly graduating, they don't want to come to school right now, they'll take a few weeks off, they've just finished graduating, and they'll come starting around June twentieth for the second Summer B session. So we're excited about those opportunities. But our numbers continue to grow, we continue to look strong, and we appreciate, again, those opportunities and support. We're actually offering more classes, more variety of classes. Traditionally, we've offered some of the beginning-level courses, but again, because of the growth and because of the student enrollment demands, we actually will offer almost the entire AA degree here within the next year, as far as if a student stayed in sequence. They could earn their Associate of Arts, the full two-year program, without having to leave Sebastian, hopefully within the next year. There's a few classes we don't offer here that they'll have to still come down to Mueller or use the online option, which is viable. The other thing that we're finding intriguing now is we're starting to get some of our neighbors to the north, just over the county line. Technically, we don't recruit that way, but we're not shying them away. If they want to drive down here, we think we offer a better product, particularly here in Sebastian, it's very convenient, so we're seeing more and more Brevard County residents start to take advantage of the programs here. And as provost, I'm not going to tell them to go home, they're welcome anytime they want to, so we're doing that. As we continue to grow, this next year, office spaces and tutoring staff will continue. We'll also be, we've now placed a full-time Take Stock and Children foundation staff member here at the site. If you don't know about Take Stock and Children, students sign a contract and their parents sign a contract in middle school. If they can stay out of trouble, they can stay with good grades, and they graduate from high school, the Take Stock and Children program is a statewide program that our foundation runs, the local part of that. Students get a $20,000 scholarship to go to IRSC and then the university of their choice within the state of Florida. There were six students at Sebastian River High School this year graduating who earned this Take Stock and Children scholarship. We're excited about that. By the way, the most in the county, from Sebastian. We are also adding a full-time math faculty. She will be housed here, Teresa Hausenhauer, who's a longtime Sebastian resident, will be moving in in the fall, so again, a full-time presence. We'll be here four days a week, she'll teach all of her classes here, and we hope to add an English faculty member by the spring, again, our core classes of math and English. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Katie Knoll, I've actually had her assigned to the campus two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. She's here all day long to meet the needs, questions, and things that are happening here in Sebastian, to meet those questions and needs of the students. So we continue to grow. I wanted to come before you and just give you an annual update on what we're doing. We appreciate the partnership. We really appreciate it for you looking out for your citizens, who of course are students, as we continue to grow and give them the educational opportunities to improve their lives. Without that, with that done, I'd be glad answering questions.
So with all that success.
Yes, ma'am.
When are you adding, building a new campus up here?
Those are decided by our friends in the legislature. I don't know if you've noticed, but Governor Scott hasn't signed that budget yet. And then, of course, our Board of Trustees and Dr. Massey look at those opportunities that come available, but we have to get in line for different, for new funding and for new facilities. And right now, we're waiting to finish a funding in a building in Fort Pierce, a career and technical education center that would serve all four counties, and that's the next building up. So hopefully, we'll jump in line soon after that.
Well, I was just thrilled to hear that the computers, you're getting all updated and you have new internet service. The week before the campus was scheduled to open, your predecessor had promised, that was one of the things I asked for before it was put in here, and in fact, we jumped through a lot of hoops getting internet service over there to do that. But then, you know how things go, and your predecessor called up, it was a Friday afternoon, about four, quarter to five, you know, at the end of the day, hey Andrea, I'm sorry, we're just not going to be able to do the computers this year. Well, that, I don't take no real well, especially when that was the thing. So, long story short, Ralph Popple got involved that evening, the legislature got involved that evening, and by eight o'clock that night, your boss, oh, actually, it was Dr., it's a Clark, Dr., the right-hand of the university president.
Dr. Locke.
Locke, Mary Locke, called me at home at eight o'clock at night and said, you're getting the computers, is there, and then she made the mistake of saying, is there anything else you need? So I told her what else, and y'all came through, and it's been one success after another. I'm just thrilled that you're doing so well.
Well, we appreciate it, and Joe, again, has been a great help last year as we can improve the internet connectivity in the building, and then our folks just brought in the new computers, that's kind of a natural. And now, the nice thing is they're on a rotation, so every three to four years, we'll have new computers that will be placed up there.
That's great. GED, I mean, that's super. I just can't tell you how proud I am of you guys, and Katie Knoll is, give her a raise.
Well, I give her a pat on the back.
Give her a raise. Thank you.
Katie's been a great, great passion about the Sebastian site, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
To mention it, Dr. Knoll has a passion for the kids and helping the kids and guiding them through the whole college process. She does a phenomenal job.
Yep, we're very proud of her. Appreciate having her. All right, anything else?
Anyone else?
Well, thank you, I look forward to coming for you next year, and the numbers will all be over four-hundred at least. That's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
You.
All right, next we have the Indian River County Utilities Director, Vincent Burke. Going to give us a presentation on the Collier Creek Harbor Point Water Project in the North County Septic to Sewer.
All right, thank you, Mayor. For the record, Director of Utility Services, Vincent Burke, have two presentations tonight. We're going to step you through the Collier Creek Estates and Harbor Point Assessment Project and where we are with that. Just a quick history. Got your sharpened pencil. Quick history here, on March of this year, the Board of County Commissioners approved Resolution Three for the Collier Creek Estates subdivision. This is for utility phases one, one A, and one B. There were some concerns from the property owners at the Sebastian River Club and in front of the board that there were some parcels that were not part of the water assessment project. They did some homework, they got some signatures, and staff was bringing back an agenda item on April eleventh. The board approved an assessment for the remaining portion of Collier Creek and Harbor Point, and on May second of this year, Resolutions One and Two, which are attached in your backup, were for the phases two and three. So what are phases two and three? There's sixty parcels. Phase two has thirty-eight parcels, the remaining portion of Collier Creek. Phase three is Harbor Point. There's twenty-four parcels in that area, and just a quick map to show you what we're talking about on the screen. So Phase One was along Easy Street on the east side of your, of the screen, the right-hand side of the screen, rather, and Phase Two is outlined in red, Phase Three for Harbor Point. So the plan is to take a termination off of Fleming Street, run that water main over West and connect an existing line that's already in place, thereby creating a loop system and redundancy in the water system. So just some upcoming dates for those folks that are unable to be here tonight or concerned about this project. Tonight, we're obviously here going over the presentation to the city council tomorrow evening at five-thirty PM. Staff will be in attendance at the Sebastian Yacht Club, so for those residents that are seeking more information or would like to know about the project specifics, perhaps where some fire hydrants are going to be located, they can certainly come down to the Sebastian Yacht Club. And then, the public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, June third, at nine o'clock in the morning. That will be in the Indian River County Board of County Commission chambers, and we're just here to update the folks as to what we've already, and we've already sent out notices to all the property owners. We're also going to be taking out two publications in the local newspaper advertising the June thirteenth public hearing meeting, and certainly, those folks, either for or against the project, can come to the public forum at that point to voice their concern. So if there's any questions, I'm available for any questions regarding Phase Two and Phase Three.
Any questions from Mr. Burke?
No. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. The second part of the presentation is to update the council on where we are with the North Sebastian Septic to Sewer project, and I have a quick outline to go over the history. Approved the initial allocation back in December twentieth of this year, based on initial opinion of probable cost. That should have been 2016, my apologies. The bids were put together, the bid package, the specifications, and the bid documents through our purchasing department. We did receive those bids, and we brought that back to the Board of County Commission to look at their revised allocations, and we're going to go over tentative schedule based on that information. So I'm here to just update the council on the board action from May of this year. So this is a timeline of how we got started and where we are today. I won't bore you with some of the dates and the details, but the bottom portion is what we're concerned about. We went out for bid in March, we got the bids back, we vetted those bids, provided an update to the board, and received approval for the revised financing mechanism due to the fact that the bids came in a little bit higher than what was initially anticipated for the project and the presentation today. So just if you recall, that there was initial opinion of probable cost of 1.797 million dollars for the Septic to Sewer. You recall that we did go out and receive a cost share grant from the St. John's River Water Management District? That thirty-three percent was based on the construction portion of the cost, or not to exceed maximum of 649,240 dollars. Utility fund contribution at twenty percent, sales tax contribution at twenty percent, and an assessment owner portion of twenty-seven percent. That's on a per ERU basis, for about 2,330 dollars per ERU. That's just the construction portion of the cost, doesn't have anything to do with the utility impact fees, but just for the stick of pipe out in the roadway, or in the right of way. However, when we did go out for bids, there were three bids that were received. Two of the bids did not adhere to the bid specs. I draw your attention to bid spec section zero-one, zero-two-five, in which they exceeded the allowable amount for the mobilization. Purchasing Department clarified that, they submitted their information, but Blue Goose Construction was unable to submit the revised cost estimate in accordance with the purchasing requirements and the bid specifications. So some total was a 2.97 million dollar bid from Tim Rose Construction, Tim Rose Contracting. That was the lowest and responsive, responsible bidder. So we then took the 2.97 million dollars and option, there were three options that were presented to the board. I won't bore you with the details, but Option Two was approved by the board, which looks at the lowest possible cost for the owner based on the per ERU. If you recall, the initial estimate was based on 1.97 million for a 2,330 dollar ERU assessment, and it has gone up accordingly. The cost share grant, while it was thirty-three percent of the initial estimate, is now only about twenty-two percent, because that maximum, that 649,000 dollars was the maximum amount. So unfortunately, we, staff did reach out to the district to see if we could try to bump that percentage up, but unfortunately, due to the contractual obligations, the district was unable to accommodate our request to try to get additional monies to offset the cost, to try to make it as low as possible for some of those folks, either in the unincorporated part of the county or within the city of Sebastian. So the board decided to keep the percentages the same, the percentage of the cost of the project going towards the 2.97, at twenty percent for the utility, and the optional sales tax contribution, leaving a thirty-eight percent, up from twenty-seven percent increase for the owner portion on a per ERU basis. It's just close to about 5,000 dollars per ERU for a gravity sewer system that has a useful life of fifty years or more. So here's the tentative schedule. We went to the board, we did award the project, however, there's a caveat built into the award recommendation, which specifically states that the notice to proceed will only be issued after Resolution Three, the public hearing, has been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So that's going to take some time for staff to put together the notices, to bring an item to the board, to do Resolutions One and Two, not unlike what we have for the Collier Creek and the Harbor Point. We have to go through the assessment procedures and process through county ordinance for the Septic to Sewer, so that's going to take some time. We anticipate doing that in the month of June. We'll prepare the Resolution Three, and if we cannot make it in the July, it might be in the August, there's only one meeting in July. If we can't make it in July, we'll be bringing that to the board in August and hopefully get approval to give the contract a notice proceed so that we can finish the project in May of next year, approximately a year from now. So that's a tentative timeline. Just to summarize, that the county board did approve the project to be awarded to Tim Rose Contracting, the amount of 2.97 million dollars. Again, the notice to proceed will only be issued once Resolution Three has been adopted by the board. We've updated the approved financing mechanism, and staff has been directed to be in the assessment procedures for One and Two, for all properties that will be benefiting from these lines to be installed, both inside the city of Sebastian and the unincorporated part of the county. So we're going to follow those procedures, we're going to notify the benefiting property owners, and hopefully, hold some town hall meetings down in the county or up here, depending on availability of meeting places, so that interested parties and affected folks will certainly have any and all information as part of this project. And there was a sample agreement that was also approved. So I appreciate the opportunity to come up to the council to talk about the water assessment project and the Septic to Sewer project, and certainly, I'm available if there's any questions.
Want to have any questions, Ms. Burke?
Hurry up. That's my answer.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Hurry up.
Hurry up.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, leads us up, we have a presentation by Rebecca Edmonds relating to the Ruth Sullivan survey boundary question.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
My name's Rebecca Edmonds. I represent Mrs. Sullivan, the property owner at 1215 Indian River Drive, which is commonly known as Harbor Lights. And I hope you all had a chance to review the packet that was submitted. There's a lot of technical information in there that I'm going to try to go through and explain briefly. Mrs. Sullivan originally obtained a survey by Mr. Hayhurst in preparation of her anticipated sale of Harbor Lights. In connection with Mr. Hayhurst's efforts, he obtained the vesting deed for Mrs. Sullivan, as well as the deeds for the properties around Mrs. Sullivan's property, one of them being the City Park that is at the end of Main Street on the water. Based upon his review, he determined that there was an overlap in the legal descriptions for the City Park and Mrs. Sullivan's property. We have submitted his formal opinion on the survey discrepancy, as well as the cause of the discrepancy. In that packet, we submitted Mrs. Sullivan's original survey, which shows that the eastern portion, in free ratification, her property is actually two parcels which are separated by Indian River Drive, just south of the park, so she owns both the east and the west parcel immediately south of the park. The survey that we submitted shows that the original survey was measured from a steel rod located on the northwest corner of her easterly parcel. That steel rod has also been identified in surveys that were obtained by the city, which were also submitted in the packet that we gave. The first survey that we submitted was the survey done by Houston Schulke Biddle and Stoddard in May 2008, in connection with the Main Street improvements. If you'll look at that survey, it indicates the existence of that steel rod measuring. So, and you'll also indicate in there that there is a line drawn as to what the southern portion of the city's parcel is, but there is no measuring distance to that southern boundary line, which in Mr. Hayhurst's opinion, is an indication that that measurement was unknown. Based upon that measurement, another survey was done for the city by Robert Richard in April of 2009, using that undefined line from the prior survey, but that survey also shows the steel measuring rod in question. So the issue becomes, what has created that overlap? That's the real issue. I, my firm obtained title searches both on the city's parcel and on Mrs. Sullivan's parcel, and obtained the vesting titles for those properties, and gave those deeds to Mr. Hayhurst and to enable him to prepare these, the drawings. Based upon his review of those documents, it is, was his opinion in what was submitted to the city council, was that the origin of the southern boundary of the City Park came from a submerged land deed from the state in the form of a TIF deed. The deed also creates the same measuring deed as Mrs. Sullivan's, the same point of beginning, but the deed contains errors which would create an inaccurate description. To quote him, he says, "The origin of this line may only be taken from the creation of a tract of submerged lands. This deed also starts at the northwest corner of Government Lot Five, which is an untraceable point, but goes to the south right-of-way line of Main Street as an eighty-foot width." Keeping in mind that at the time the deed was given, Main Street's configuration was different than it currently exists. This legal does not connect to the north right-of-way line of Main Street as it states, it falls short by 10.62 feet, which in his opinion is creating the discrepancies and the overlap in the two legal descriptions. The upland in question, meaning the land as opposed to a vesting deed concerning your riparian rights, starts back in the thirties, actually, when the city took title to that property as the result of a foreclosure of a tax deed. And in that tax deed, there was not a Meats and Browns description, it was actually a lot reference to a subdivision that had been platted over that area at the time, so we're not as confused by the Meats and Browns and calls as we would be. That legal description includes through Lot Six, Block Two of the Carol Roberts subdivision, and if you look at the most recent survey that Mr. Hayhurst prepared, which shows the overlap, you'll see that there's an indication of where Lot Six is. And in the southwest corner of Lot Six marries up with the measuring rod that Mrs. Sullivan's deed shows is her northern boundary line. We have submitted the packet, we initially submitted the packet to Mr. Ginsburg, and we have worked with him and with the city manager on this issue. I believe you were provided correspondence from a third-party surveyor that they had contacted, which indicates that this is quite a problem, and that they don't know the answer, but that it would cost somewhere north of 15,000 dollars for the city to figure out the cause of the problem, and/or to verify the information that Mr. Hayhurst has already provided through Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Sullivan is attempting to get the issue clarified and is asking the city for further assistance in doing that in the form of a deed to clear up the title dispute with respect to the hatched property that was submitted on the survey in question. Once this issue is cleared up, it will make the property it will make the property more favorable to an ultimate developer of that property, which I am sure the city would look favorable upon in some manner to add to your tax roll. If you look visibly at the property, if you were to physically go to the property, the city's improvements on the property are north considerably of the property line in question. In fact, the riprap, if you will, as indicated on some of the surveys, is actually 30 feet beyond the line in question, and the property visibly appears as if it's Mrs. Sullivan's property, and most people would assume when you're driving by that it is. The city has never made any improvements or done anything to that portion that's in question. So, that being said, I'd like to know if you have any questions or need any clarifications or provide any guidance as to what the next steps are.
All right. Mr. Griffin. Have you sat down with Ms. Edmonds and Mr. Ginsburg and Ms. Sullivan to try and come to us, some kind of?
About a year ago, I met with Ms. Sullivan, and we talked about the issue shortly thereafter. I believe she engaged Ms. Edmonds, and then Ms. Edmonds contacted Bob Ginsburg, and the three of us had a sit-down to discuss this. So, yes, sir.
Okay. And so, why, you're at an impasse, and that's why we're here?
Well, it, I mean, I don't think I'm being presumptuous to say that it's not up to me to give quick claim deeds. It's not up to a city manager to do something like that. There is this discrepancy. Ms. Edmonds is correct in her description. We're, from our side, I would say that we're relying on what Mr. Hayhurst said, and I've met with Mr. Hayhurst separately, by the way. I forgot to mention that. And it's all a very rational explanation of what happened, but frankly, it would be very easy for us to say, "Okay, we'll just clear this up with a quick claim deed," or do we pursue it and get our own verification? Not that I don't trust Mr. Hayhurst, but we get our own verification of what's going on. Ms. Edmonds is correct. That would probably cost in excess of $15,000, and then if there was a dispute which arises that based on what council would give us direction to do, you know, you could easily go, as Ms. Edmonds said, way north of that. So, I hope you all see my dilemma, too, in this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You said you've done a title search on both pieces of property?
Yes.
Have you presented that information to the city manager, showing the results of the title search?
I'm, I, it's, we've been working on it so long, I'm not sure whether I've presented those to them or not.
Okay.
But I know-
Because you went back to, you talked about a submerged land lease.
And that was, that was actually submitted in the packet.
That was, okay.
Well, a submerged land deed.
Okay.
Yeah. And I know that Mr. Ginsburg is aware of the foreclosure lawsuit, the best, the root of title for the city. I know he's aware of that.
All right. This is not in a position on the agenda where we can take action anyway. I'd like to recommend that we place this on the agenda as an action item as soon as possible, a future meeting. And at the same time, you might, you might make sure that they have access to your title search information, because the first thing I thought about when I looked at this is we need to do a title search on both pieces of property.
I have two reports that say.
So, for the city manager to see that and be able to come to us and say, "We've seen that, and it's a certified title search company," and so forth, and so forth, and so forth, I think that would be a big help.
Absolutely.
To do that. So, I'd like to, if we can't get it on, as an agenda item.
Right. I agree. I think that's a good decision, and I would like to see some negotiation, since we seem to be at an impasse and there's things that we could do. We don't want to tie up this, if there's a sale pending, or we don't want to have to tie that unnecessarily. However, things can be negotiated, and perhaps there's a win-win for everybody here. If you want it fast, maybe putting some deed restrictions would work. You know, with some conditions on the property that we would be willing to settle on. So, I would like that to be considered and brought to us, too, or anything that you have done in the past as far as those considerations. That would be of great help, and would, it would help me look favorably on releasing the property and doing a quick claim. But I don't know that I'm necessarily going to be real anxious to say, "Sure, go ahead, have it," unless it's clear. So, I think there's wiggle room in negotiation here, so I'd like to see a little of that.
Right. See, if you put it on the second meeting in June, you'd be able to check to that title search by then?
The next meeting, assuming Ms. Edmonds has those title searches, I'm sure she does, I can get copies of that. Our next meeting is June 14th, so I'd like to try to move this along as quick as possible, and I'll be in touch with Ms. Edmonds, and I'll gather some materials and bring them forward.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I have none.
All right. That covered it. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Good.
You know, all right?
Well, we're pleased to be here from the Senior Activity Center to present the city with a check, our donation back to the city for all that they do for us. They provide us space and the ability to exist at no cost, and that enables us to help the people here in the, in the community by giving them a nice, safe place to go. So, let me get the check.
All right. How many folks you got over there participating in the senior center?
600?
Yeah, 600 people.
Great. Big check.
Can't run very far with that.
We're happy to present this to the city. It's $1,000. We would like to ask that it be used for the construction of the new restrooms at the ballpark. That serves the kids and the adults as well. And we've historically given back to the city as a thank you for what you've done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Joe, take that when you go out. Don't let it sail you away.
I'm taking this through the drive-thru.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then we have a certificate for Mr. Ken Kilgore. He's the one who's in charge of all the money, so I guess it's you ultimately who gets the check.
Yes, I have it.
All right. But once again, this is from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and it's a certificate of recognition for budget preparation to the Administrative Services Department, the city of Sebastian. The certificate of recognition for budget preparation is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in their government unit achieving a distinguished budget presentation award. The distinguished budget presentation award, which is the highest award in governmental budgeting, is presented to those government units whose budgets are judged to adhere to program standards. Now, look, I understand it doesn't seem like it means a lot, but this thing is a really big deal in the finance world, and due to the hard work of Mr. Kilgore and the rest of his staff, how many years have you gotten?
13.
13 years in a row, which is kind of unheard of, and that's why this city pretty much runs in the black year in and year out. Thank you, Ken.
Well, I'll just add that our budget document, you know, we put a lot of time and effort into it, and it's submitted to this program. There's three of our counterparts throughout the nation that look it over, make comments, make sure we comply with the standards, you know, that we've adequately disclosed information that we should, and gone through all the necessary steps. But they also offer recommendations on how we can make things more clear, or maybe add some additional schedules or something to make it more informative. So, it's a worthwhile program. We take a lot of their suggestions and implement them the following year. So, we hope to continue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ken. All right, and just a reminder that Monday, May 29th, we're going to have a Memorial Day ceremony in Riverview Park at 11:00 a.m. Any other brief announcements? No?
You got, you got the ceremony covered, Mr. Mayor?
I'll be there.
Okay, because I have to, I have to ask for an excuse from this ceremony.
Okay. No, I'll be there. 11:00 a.m. I'll be there early.
I will be there as well.
You'll be there, too? Mr. Dodd? Mr. Dodd will be there. They got it all covered.
You guys are awesome.
All right. All right.
Can I have, can I have an excused absence? I am, I'm not here.
All right. We'll give you an excuse. No work. At this time, I'm going to recess the city council meeting and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. So, it's a call order for that meeting. Counsel, can I get a motion for approval of minutes from the last meeting?
I'll move.
Second. Roll call on that, Ms. Williams?
Vice Chairman Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
And Chairman McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. That leads us up to information and discussion of invitation to apply for the septic-to-sewer grant. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Wanted to make sure that the board members understood that we had recently sent out a letter to 144 eligible folks in the CRA about the septic-to-sewer program. The letter indicated what the program is all about and that folks could apply for up to $15,000 for a septic-to-sewer individual grant. Also, there was an insert in that, in that letter, and I put one on your disposition. You should be able to see that. So, that also went out. Also, Dory has provided a status of where we are right now. We have three, we have three applications here tonight that you'll be considering subsequent to this, and prior to that, $270,000 is available in the program, and we're anticipating a few more applications at our next meeting.
We had very good response back when the letters went out. We had, forgot we had mailed them over the weekend, the Friday before, and all of a sudden Tuesday, we were receiving quite a bit of phone calls from the people that had received these letters. And through that letter, through those letters, I think within the next couple of meetings, you'll see those applications trickle in, as it does take time for them to put together their application to Indian River County for their permit. But it was a very good response. We were really happy with the amount of calls that we got. Awesome. With the letter.
And also, should, it's worth noting that I should thank staff for participating in the Earth Day event. They were down there handing out pamphlets, some signs about the septic-to-sewer program. So, thank you very much to staff for doing that on Earth Day.
All right. Sounds great. And any questions about that?
Just one. Next year's budget for the CRA, is it possible, maybe we should look at seeing if we can increase the amount of money we put into this program, because at the amount that's there now, you're going to run out of money long before the hundred businesses get their conversion done.
Our strategy was, is Frank here tonight? Is, we're applying to the Indian River Lagoon Council for another grant, and I believe the number was, don't hold me to this, I think it was $250,000.
Nice.
So, we're, we're trying to up that grant request, and I think that's in the works, but I will check that tomorrow morning, sir.
Okay. All right. Because I, from a budgeting point of view, this is a really good program, and it's going to run, money's going to run out before the demand for it does at some point in time, and it would be worth trying to see if next year's budget, we can increase that, that impact to it a little bit.
Yes, sir.
That's, thanks.
All right. Sounds good. That brings us up to Item 7D, awarding the septic-to-sewer grants. Am I take these individually or all together?
Move approval of all three.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on the septic-to-sewer grants or the applicants? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Chairman McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Be no further business there. I'll adjourn the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting and reconvene as the city council. Bringing us up to our consent agenda?
I'd like to pull Items D and E.
D as in dog and-
D as in dog, and E as in echo.
Okay.
All right. I'll move approval for Items A, B, C, and F.
Second.
Roll call on that, Ms. Williams?
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Real, real quick on, on both D and E, could we possibly make this a conditional approval? Have you reviewed the paperwork, the, are the, the 501(c)(3) applications in order for both the craft club and the art club?
Not, not since we went through that evolution.
That was a year ago.
About a year ago, a year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago. I'd like to make this conditional approval, I, I'm willing to approve it, as long as the paperwork is up, up to snuff, because things change from year to year.
I thought that was all cleared up.
No, it's clear, no, there's no que, but, but there's, there are forms you have to file. The state has, has forms you have to file.
Yeah, I understand that.
Each and every year for a corporate.
I thought in a meeting earlier this year, that was kind of all settled. Am I, am I wrong in that assumption?
I thought once, and I'm, I should be schooled on this better, but I thought once they had that approval and the documents were produced, if they lost those documents, wouldn't it be the onus on them to, to notify us?
Yeah, but we've gone through that before. We had, we had some, the loss of, it was a 501(c)(3), and, and then it was taken away, and then it came back, maybe we're a 501(c)(4). We've seen that happen before.
I will, I'll make the phone calls tomorrow, and I'll try to get those reassurances.
It's just, it's a matter of just checking a couple of places, like in Guide Star lists, Guide Star lists, all the 501(c)(3)'s. There are simple ways you can verify that the paperwork has been kept up to date. It's paperwork with the state, and it's paperwork with the federal government, that the 990s have been put in, and that in the state, what is it, you check on the state. Those, there are just a couple of things every year that have to be filed.
Is, is that a condition of the use of the park?
Well, I would say because we're giving them at a reduced rate, the park.
Okay. All right. So, the issue would be if they are a 501(c)(3), they get a reduced rate? Yes, sir. Okay. All right.
And we, if we hadn't seen it before, I would, I would not have reason to doubt that, that things change. But we have seen it happen, that we went from a one status of 501(c)(3) to, ooh, there's no record, to, oh, we're a 501(c)(4), to 501(c)(7), to back to 501(c)(3). So, as long as everything's copacetic, if we check every year, I have no problem with this, and the schedule's fine, but-
Okay.
Things change.
Right. I, I don't see any reason to have the approval contingent on that. Whether you give them a reduced rate could be, is contingent on that. So, that's your choice. I mean, basically, you're, you're directed to provide a reduced rate for a 501(3)(C), and if they have the paperwork, fine. If they don't, you don't.
Okay.
But I don't see any reason to have the approval of the use of the park conditional on that. That's, that's a rating thing. I mean, we let people use the park all day long, or not all day long. We let people use the park, and we just charge them a non-
That, and that's reasonable. That's, that's a reasonable amendment. So, it, I don't think I made the amend, I'd like to, to, to make it conditionable upon the rate conditional. I'll approve the dates. We'll approve the dates today, but the rate conditional upon presentation of updated 501(c) status.
Second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on that?
Yeah, that's a good point.
You got to come up to the mic, ma'am, and state your name for the record, please.
I'm Marie Ferraro.
I'm Marie Ferraro, the president of the craft club, and thank you for that explanation. It is my understanding, since I'm kind of a newbie, the previous president was seven years, and I got kind of caught last year with a lot of trying to figure out what's going on. We did determine that the craft club was never filed for the 501(c)(3), and Mr. Griffin did say that we could, well, in our meetings, it was indicated to us that we could use the park at the regular fee, that we did not have to pursue that determination. We're still considering whether to apply for that, because we have filed as a not-for-profit in the past. We've filed the 990s, for instance, but we don't have the official determination letter. We are happy to pay the full fee.
You are a city-sponsored event, technically, because we come around and we don't, well...
Well, the art club and the Pelican Island and all, I guess we're that kind of group. We give everything away. I mean, we give it to charity. We are not-for-profit by character. The IRS does not recognize us in the determination letter. I can pursue that. I have been talking with the IRS. However, it is a very expensive venture. It's going to cost the club initially $800, plus the effect of...
A couple hundred dollars for the, you don't have to hire an attorney.
Well, the application fee, if there's a certain income level, is $400. If it's over that $10,000 mark for three consecutive years, it is $800. And again, I'm working with the IRS right now. We may not want to pursue that avenue, and we would still love to be in the park, and we'll pay whatever the going rate is. That's kind of what I want to make sure is happening.
Do we rent the park, the whole park, to anybody else who is not a nonprofit?
The only one I can think of is the art club. That's it.
Well, no, they are a nonprofit. What I'm saying, and the clam bake is a nonprofit, and the shrimp fest is a nonprofit. This is news to me, too, because I was led to believe you were a nonprofit.
Well, we were. I was led to believe by the previous regime that we were. And when I went to give Mr. Griffin my determination letter, the IRS informed us that we did not have that determination and that I should be applying for it. We met several times over the course of last year trying to get our eggs together, and he says, all right, we'll pay the not-for-profit, the regular rate. The club acts as a not-for-profit. We donate all of our proceeds at the end of each season to local charities, VNA, Halo, Backpack Kids, everything at the end goes there. So, in character, we are a not-for-profit organization. We do not have the IRS determination letter. We filed the 990s. It's kind of weird, because they...
No, I know.
They recognize us, but they didn't provide the determination letter. I would be happy to get that if that's going to be a condition, but I'm hesitant with the fees and the dealings with the IRS. So, whatever you say I have to do, I'll do. But if we can get away with just paying the regular fee, we would love to do that.
So, you got a...
Well, we're just approving the dates, and then the rates are contingent on whatever your status is with the city. So, your dates are in the process of being...
Well, I'd like to reserve it for a future time, not tonight, because I'll agree to approve the dates tonight, but this is another discussion. I was under the impression that you were a 501(c)(3). I thought it was cleared up. I don't know about the rest of the council.
Is there anything in the procedures or an ordinance or a resolution that requires that someone be a 501(c)(3) to rent the park?
I don't believe there is. I've read it several...
No, I'm asking Mr. Griffin.
No, I don't believe there is either.
Okay.
But I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
But I do know that it has been the policy to, for reduced rate...
Okay. I'm not talking about the rates. I understand that. I'm talking about, is it a requirement to rent the full facility to someone? And if it is, and you can check on that, if it is, then the craft club needs to be told that in the future, if they don't become a 501(c)(3), they can't use the whole park. Assuming, and I'm asking if there's something in there that says that. If not, then, you know, we shouldn't stop. Quite frankly, the whole concept behind that park is a, you know, pleasant life experience for people, and the craft club having a showdown there, for some people, is a pleasant life experience, you know? So, but if there's something in our procedures or an ordinance or a resolution that says it has to be a 501(c)(3), then I think you can counsel them that they need to do that. If there's not, then I don't think we can deny them use of the park in any way. Now, the rate, you do have that. I understand that.
May I ask one small question, then? There are several different categories of not-for-profits, the 501(c)(3) being one of them. That one allows us to take donations, like the Salvation Army does. There are other categories, like the five, I think you addressed it, Mrs. Kitchen.
Twenty-seven of them, yeah.
Right. Exactly. Are you, are we looking for specific 501(c)(3)?
I'm not looking for anything. Okay? I'm looking to get an approval on your dates.
And I don't know exactly where I'm, what I feel right now, other than I'm really disappointed to find out that you are not a 501(c)(3). I, we went through this.
You want to know the truth? In the last year and a half, I've heard this council spend so much time talking about 501(c)(3). I'm really tired of it personally.
You should see the 18-page application.
If we have a rule, then you have to do it.
I know. Well, that's part of the deal.
Again, we would be happy to do that.
All right. You have a question for Ms. Ferraro? All right. Thank you, Ms. Ferraro.
Thank you.
Because I guess, you know, the one thing is determining about the 501(c)(3), there are some businesses that feel it's unfair competition, that they're down there, and you're giving them 10 dates a year in the park.
I agree with that.
And that's part of the reason we were looking at.
I agree with that.
They would establish that, because they are getting the park for 10 days a week. Even if they were getting the park at regular rates, some businesses would feel that is unfair competition.
I don't have any issue.
But we were given to them. So, that's why it all went around, you're glad you weren't here that whole year and a half.
It was a lot easier watching it on television. I'm sure it was here in person.
All right. But it was better live. So, we got a motion and a second for the dates on D and E, correct?
Yeah, actually, the dates with full price. Let me state the motion again. I move to approve, I'll do it one at a time, move to approve the craft club with, at the full rate, and move to approve the art club, as stated.
Second. So, we're good on that? Any further discussion on that? Roll call, Ms. Williams?
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Leads us up to committee reports and appointments. With the Natural Resources Board, Ms. Williams?
Yes. We have a vacancy, and I have Nicole Moszblak, and she's here if you would like to interview her.
She's here.
She's here.
She's here.
You want to come up and say something a little bit about yourself? You have a very impressive resume to get on the Natural Resources Board, at least I thought so anyways.
Yes, I think so, too.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Nikki Moszblak. I am currently an environmental science teacher down at River Beach High School, and I'm interested, sorry, am I close enough? I'm interested in the Natural Resources Board, because obviously, I tell my students to try and protect the environment every day, and so I wanted to play my own part. Before I went back to teaching, I, in 2012, got my PhD up at Florida Tech in ecology, where I looked at, studied the impacts of climate change over the last 15,000 years on the forests in the Andes. So, you know, it's kind of a diverse background, but nonetheless, trying to protect the environment. So, I'm hoping I can do that on the Natural Resources Board.
Move to approve her for life.
All right. Very good. There you go. You get a lifetime appointment.
I'll do what I can. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other committee reports? No? All right. Leads us up to...
Do we not need a, didn't she make a motion on that?
No consensus for her.
It's, yeah, she's the only applicant, so...
Okay. Yeah. Just checking.
Somebody got to give me a straight answer. All right. We got a public hearings. We have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number O-17-02, alcoholic beverages in Riverview Park. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Ordinance O-17-02, an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, relating to public park rules and regulations, limiting the use of alcohol to city-sponsored events, amending code section 74-4A7, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, second reading.
Second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance concerning alcoholic beverages in the park? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams?
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Leads up to unfinished business, item 12A, approve wreaths across America memorial service at Veterans Memorial on December 16, 2017. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. After several months of discussion with Carolyn Sartain Anderson and some folks that she's been working with in trying to get a wreaths across America project into the City of Sebastian in our cemetery, we've come to an agreement that on 16 December 2017, that we would have a memorial service at the Veterans Memorial in Sebastian, and I am recommending approval.
I have some comments, some questions?
I move approval of approving the wreaths.
I'll second that.
All right.
I have some real concerns with this, and I just would like to review with council. We are adding a seventh veterans' ceremony to our list. Every year, we currently have six ceremonies. It starts the end of May with Memorial Day, and then we go to 4th of July, right before the parade, there's a ceremony in the park. Then we go to September 11th, there's Patriots' Day. Then we go to November 11th, which is Veterans' Day. Then we go December 7th, which is Pearl Harbor Day. And then in early February, we have the four chaplains. Now, please note, September 11th, then the next one is November 11th, then December 7th. These are on our agenda already. So, to do one nine days after December 7th, we're really stretching ourselves out there, and I think we're stretching the public and public interest, too. When you do things, you dilute the importance of an event if you keep doing things over and over and over. And we are losing people from showing up. If you've noticed, our ceremonies are getting a little bit smaller. We used, we were on a big growth, and now they're starting to decline again. My suggestion is to, on December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, and oh, by the way, I had conversations with the American Legion commander and the, both, two commanders at the VFW, the outgoing commander and the incoming commander. Both commanders are here today, if you have any questions for them. But they alternate, the Legion and the VFW each year alternates. So, this year, the VFW is in charge of all the ceremonies. So, the commander of the VFW, right now, is home. Commander Willis is home, frantically doing up Monday's ceremony. Commander Willis will be taking over in June and will be responsible for the ceremonies for the rest of the month, or the rest of the year, which means this ceremony would be in his purview also. My suggestion is that the ceremony itself be combined on December 7th with the Pearl Harbor, and the wreath laying in the park. We have seven statues in the park, and there are seven ceremonial wreaths for wreaths across America, that a wreath be placed December 7th in Memorial Park at the same ceremony. That way, our resources, our city manager, we don't have to pay them overtime this Saturday coming up. We're not stretching our resources. We're not stretching the public. We're not stretching the VFW or the Legion to do this. And again, it rotates every year. Now, I know there are some requirements and restrictions for wreaths across America, so I called them. Yesterday, I spoke with Julie...
Bright.
What?
Bright.
Bright. Ms. Julie Bright, who is the location coordinator for wreaths across America. And I told her of my concerns about being ceremonied out. It's a lot of demands. That means you're going to be asked to go to one more, which I'm not against ceremonies, but it is Christmas time, and nine days prior to that, you will have gone to a ceremony for Pearl Harbor Day. I asked, I explained that to Julie. I said, we're a very patriotic city, very, very patriotic city, and we do six every year, six ceremonies. Most places only do two. We do six. So, I asked her, I said, what if we were to combine it? Would you have any angst about combining and putting the wreaths up? We already have the public there. We already have the honor guard. We have the Legion and the VFW there. We have the city already setting up. So, there's no, we're not taxing on anybody's time and effort. And we do the ceremony there, the placing of the wreaths, you know, we'll leave it to the commander to decide how to set up the ceremony. And then on the 16th, should there be wreaths to place in the cemetery, that's the day that the sons of the American Legion or whoever's going to help, the ladies that are organizing this, they go to the cemetery and put the wreaths on the cemetery. There is no place in our cemetery to have this ceremony. There isn't. There's no shade. There's no parking in our ceremony. You have to park your car and walk to all the different places. So, I think I'm really concerned about taking, obligating us to yet another ceremony. And there is, Julie said that we could do it this way. All we have to do is write to their board, and they would be happy to submit it. And she said, they'll probably approve it, because that's a very good reason. Their concern is that any wreaths that are going in the cemetery be done on the cemetery day, which is the 16th. We can make that happen, and it's not going to burden the city or anyone else involved in this, other than the Wreaths Across America group. That is my suggestion, and I think that's the viable and appropriate thing to do here.
Well, that seems to make the most sense, but, you know, I read in my packet, it seemed like everybody was all in agreement with doing everything with this.
Unfortunately, that's not...
I mean, it makes the most sense that you have this ceremony in conjunction with another day, and then you got to lay the wreaths on the 16th anyways. You can't have the ceremony in the cemetery on the 16th and put those out then, if they're all in agreement with that.
The thing is, Commander Haskins is here, and he was in on the meetings and some of the meetings, and Commander Willis is in agreement with what I just proposed. They're not anxious to take on an extra ceremony. That's why I was concerned when I read this packet, because it's one thing for the honor guard to say, yeah, we'll show up. An honor guard can volunteer, but there's a lot more to a ceremony than just the honor guard. You have speakers. You have sometimes choruses, and you have chaplains and all kinds of things that go along with the ceremony. The honor guard is but one part, one piece, and Commander Haskins can tell you, it gets a little complicated. Commander, could you come up here? Do you have two cents to put in?
I've spoke to Andrea the last few nights on the telephone on this. They had a short, a couple of months ago, they had a short presentation over to the They had a short, couple of months ago, they had a short presentation over to the VFW. I didn't get all the particulars, I haven't really seen their ceremony and all this, I mean, the ceremony, if, if, you're well aware, sir, you've been to our memorial days, our veterans' days, there's a lot, there's a lot to put in on these ceremonies. You have your, your commanders, your senior vices, your, your chaplains, you have, you have a lot of people involved. Now, if we're already doing, and, and Andrea did mention one point, it's Christmas time. In December, it's Christmas time. Everybody's having functions, everybody's having parties. If we already have a group of people there for Pearl Harbor Day, at the end of our Pearl Harbor Day, add them into the end of it, and would you be extending a little bit of time? And we could turn around, and I think it would be feasible, not only for them, but for us. And then on the 16th, our honor guard said that they would go, I believe Wayne said that the honor guard jumped up and said they, they would go to the, to the cemetery, but that would be just places, the, whoever's going to, the Sea Scouts or Boy Scouts, whoever's going to help them place all the wreaths, they can place the wreaths on the 16th, but this, but that would be just placing of the wreaths, just like they do for Memorial Day when, when the Boy Scouts go out and like place the flags and everything on all the veterans' graves. It'd be the same type of thing, but they could do the, I would suggest that they do the function along with Pearl Harbor Day. That's just my opinion. I haven't spoke to my new officers on this yet because I'm just, this has just got dropped in my lap, and I don't know what kind of ceremony they want, but I'd be glad to help them with it if I know exactly what they want.
All right. All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It, it just sounds to me like there's a lot of, a lot of, not, confusion is not the right word, but maybe miscommunication, because I was under the impression that the VFW and other organizations had kind of bought in on this.
Right.
I'm going to withdraw my second on your motion, and what I'd like to do is make a motion that we table this item and ask the city manager to readdress it with the individuals who applied and see if they can't get a little bit better handle on what they are going to ask us to do on this. I don't think we should craft the ceremony up here today and, and mandate that it's done any certain way. I, I'd like to see that happen between the individuals who are requesting this and the VFW and, and the city itself as opposed to us doing that.
I'd be glad to work on doing anything that I could to help them, sir. I just don't know what they expect right now.
Yeah.
And being Christmas time, you know, you're 16th, you're only 10 days away from Christmas, and you're asking your community to come out on another day, I think it'd be kind of hard.
Right. All right, thank you, sir. So, Mr. Griffin, can you get back with the organizations and also with the sponsors for the wreaths across America, see if they can work out putting it together on December 7th and then laying the wreaths on December 16th? I'm always available to 16th to 7th, it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
You know, but I mean, it, it seems to make the most sense to do that. Can you do that?
I think my next move is to get everyone involved in the same room.
Yeah.
And find out.
Thank you, that would be helpful.
Exactly what.
I would like.
Everyone wants, and I will make, I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't mean.
No, that's okay, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
And then I'll, I'll make, also call Ms. Bright and see if we can make that connection with the 7th and 16th and, and see what the options are after I talk to all the players that are involved.
Okay, now, this is. I think I'd be advisable.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
This is an action item, so either you have to withdraw it or we have to table one of the two.
I would, I would say you withdrew your, your second, I think the motion has to be withdrawn, and then we just.
All right, I made a motion to withdraw, but I didn't hear a second on that, so.
And then I'll table the, the item and, and I'll report back either first, first or second meeting in June.
Yeah, because we, we have some citizens who've done a lot of work on this, and they need to, they need to be involved in the decision on how they would like to see this happen and how they would like it proposed, and then they can work with the other groups that are.
Yes, sir.
Involved in that. I, I, yeah, I was under the impression.
There's also the logistics, isn't that also the day of the Christmas parade as well? Right around there?
Oh.
No, Christmas parade.
It's the first.
First, first weekend.
The first weekend is the Christmas parade, always.
All right. Now, is there anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Because I know there's some people that are very passionate.
Thank you.
But I think that's the thing which came to me, is you got all these other dates together, why not try and combine them? And then the specialty is the laying of the wreaths on the 16th is the way I understand it. Yes, ma'am?
We're done, we're done, we're, we're done. We're not going any further on this, and I thank those of you, whoever have been helping us all along, and right now, Andrea, why didn't you call me? I, I, the amount of hours that we have put forth, and the amount of work that has already been done, I feel like we have been, uh, 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 one sudden this evening. We're, we're done, Bob, we're done. I thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? All right, so you'll see what you can do, and then you get back to us. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. L C up at 12B, approve the shrimp fest and craft beer hullabaloo agreement authorized to city manager to execute appropriate documents. Mr. Griffin?
At our last council meeting, I was given instructions to go forward and work on a agreement and bring it back to council. Mr. Jinger and myself got together, traded some emails, and, and worked out an agreement. This, this agreement basically mirrors what the clam bake festival agreement is, and with some slight changes, and I'm bringing that forward tonight for approval, requesting approval. Mr. Gring, Mr. Jinger is here tonight for any questions that you might have.
I'll move approval of the, the appropriate documents.
Second.
All right, anyone from the public wish to speak about this?
I'd like to offer an amendment that we label this as a city-sponsored event, so under our new alcohol provision, they're eligible to serve beer.
It, it already is.
We already said that, I think at the last meeting.
Oh, we already said that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
L C up item 12C, approve the construction services agreement to LH Tanner Construction, amount of $306,053 for working waterfront restrooms. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. This, this request tonight, it's kind of long and convoluted, it's outlined, obviously, in my agenda transmittal to you, but for the public's certification, I, I just think I, that we need to offer up, or I need to offer up an explanation. This project started some time ago, and what we did was combine city match money along with a fine grant, Florida Inland Navigation District grant of $88,551 for the Phase Two project at the working waterfront. Phase Two essentially was the construction of a restroom, construction of some stormwater areas, and also paving of the parking lot on the east side of Indian River Drive. That's basically what it was. We engaged the services of one of our engineering consultants for design, engineering, and permitting. We took care of that and went out to bid in, a couple of months ago, that bid closed in mid-April of 2017. We opened up the bids, and there were two, two bids. The high bid was $551,000, the low bid was $503,000. Both of those bids were severely over budget, and we rejected both of those bids. I sought advice from our city attorney. He advised me that I could engage the low bidder and try to value engineer the project to reduce the cost and, and the city's exposure. Concurrent with that, I contacted officials from the Florida Inland Navigation District to see if they wanted to put any more skin in the game. Actually, I contacted them twice with a couple of different options, and they weren't, they weren't receptive to that. So anyway, Frank Watanabe, the city engineer, myself, sat down with the low bidder who was LH Tanner, and we sought to, as I say, value engineer this, this project, and what we came up with was that we would build the restroom facility only. We would forego the parking lot improvements and the stormwater improvements were, which were there because of the parking lot, and we would build only the restroom facility. That means that I would have to come back to council for more money, and the more money is $114,433 plus, we feel that we do need a contingency, and that would be $15,000. That's kind of arbitrary, but we think that's fairly safe. So the total is just short of $130,000 that I'm requesting to complete the project, which would drive this up to a total amount of $306,535. My options here would be, number one, obviously, I would like to see this project go forward. This project is outlined in our working waterfront management plan on file with Florida Communities Trust. The last stewardship report that I submitted to them in December of 2016 also outlines that we would proceed, we would ostensibly be proceeding with construction of this restroom in Phase 2A. I would have to modify that, but as a scenario, if we, if we decided, if council decides, obviously, to cancel this project and shelve it, we're still kind of on the hook, or it's anticipated that we are going to complete this restroom project by Florida Communities Trust, and at some future time, we would have to do it. We could reapply the fine for another grant next year, but that would be in conjunction with our Phase 3A, which is seawall reconstruction for protection of that facility there, and I would have to come back to council for even more money than the $130,000 that I'm requesting tonight. So faced with those options, I think this is the better of the two or the three if we would cancel, and I'm requesting that we proceed with the $306,535 project for restroom construction at working waterfront, and I am requesting appropriation of $129,433 from the DST fund. Sorry, that was so long-winded.
Could you repeat that?
Well, I move approval.
Word for word.
I second the approval.
You know, I mean, that's the, the one thing is, I was up at the mayor's breakfast Friday, and we've discussed this, all the projects are coming in way higher than we anticipated. I mean, that was the same as Mr. Burke was talking about, extending the sewer line way up there, and then the cost of everything vertically is rising, 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 so do we get it done now? Or do, or do we wait? And it could be much more money, or another recession hits, and then we're out of luck.
Now, I hate to do this, but I find I have to ask some questions. And it's got nothing to do with, I, I understand that we have a commitment on the working waterfront project to, to build a restroom. My question is, is it, is this a, is this restroom being built for public access?
Yes.
Is it, is it, is the reason that it's in the proposal to provide the fishermen a restroom? In other words, is, is the reason the restroom is there is because we have an obligation to provide a restroom to be used by the fishermen as they come in?
Yes.
So are there, I'm, I'm just looking at the old, the $306,000 in Sebastian right now, you can build a, a pretty nice two-bedroom or three-bedroom, two-bath house on a lot for that. And I understand you're smiling because it's, when people bid to the government, they, they usually bid a lot higher because they make more money on it, but the, the real question in my mind, are there options to, we, it seems like we've got a really nice restroom here that would be better suited for us at the ballpark, you know, because of the facilities in there. Are there options that are less expensive? Not, is, is a unisex restroom, since the original intent for this restroom, or the real intent, is not to have a restroom, it's there because we don't have one for the public. We do. When that, when Krabby Bills is open, which is when the public goes down there, they have a restroom, and the public uses that restroom. When Krabby Bills closes, the public, the only people there are the fishermen. Could we not build a unisex restroom? Could we not build something smaller and less grand as this, than this, and, and do it cheaper? I'm just asking those questions because I think the public has a right to understand why we're going to spend $300,000 on a restroom, and so I want to hear, want people to have an opportunity to hear that, so.
And we talked about this.
Yes, we did, yes.
And I went to Frank and talked about some of the options that you brought up, and one of the things was, can't we cordon off an area to provide restroom access in Krabby Bills building that would provide 24 hours a day access for the fishermen? Because they might come in at 3:00 in the morning or something like that when, when, when that building is closed. And frankly, that would be a huge undertaking in engineering and architectural design to try to convert that 100-year-old building for 24-hour access. So respectfully, I'd have to say we'd have to reject, or I would recommend rejecting that idea. We downscaled, believe it or not, we did downscale the, this bathroom that we're proposing tonight, but the, the architectural design is in keeping what's going on down there, and we felt that, that that was necessary. As far as I'm concerned, $306,000 is distasteful to me as a taxpayer as, as it is to you, but we can shelve this, that, that would be an idea, and just try to put up a much smaller building with an even smaller lift station and try to work something out there. I, I am under a time constraint with the fine grant. So full disclosure on that would be, and I think we can get an extension, but that would be a year, I believe, would, one year, so it's, that would be till next August. So we could probably, we could probably do something between now and next August. Yes, sir. So that would be an option.
I mean, I just go back to the original engineered proposal, the, the 500 and some thousand dollar proposal, and that was probab, I mean, that was a, that, that was much greater than a restroom for the fishermen at 4:00 in the morning. And I just want to make sure that we've looked at what problem we're trying to solve, a restroom for the fishermen at 4:00 in the morning, and we're not, you know, and engineered that as opposed to engineered something that is, that's much greater than that, and we're spending a lot of money on that. I, I'm not opposed to the restroom. I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to spending money because the engine, we've engineered to spend money, not, not because of the, of the existence of the restroom. So, I mean, I have, I have a real nightmare with this $300,000 restroom down there when I understand that the reason it's there is not, that we're not building something for public access. We have a public restroom there. It's not like we don't have one. It is handicap accessible and, and so forth. So my question is, it's, you know, now, this is for the rest of the council, is it, should we try to get it engineered to be less than it is for less money? And that's, that's basically my question.
We have, right now, invested about $34,000 right in that area for engineering, architecture, and permitting. That's, that's our investment right now. That, that is out of the match money that we put with the grant, with the fine grant. So currently now on the project, we have right around $144,000.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we, we controlled that $34,000 worth of engineering, we controlled that, City of Sebastian did. We, we worked with the engineers, we're the ones that set the parameters, they, they engineered and designed what we agreed to engineer and design. My question is, did we ever look at something smaller, given the, given what it is?
Well, we, we, we gave them the instructions of duplicating what we have in some of the other restaurants, so, and we wanted some sort of uniformity. Putting a unisex restaurant there, or restaurant, restroom would be, would be obviously an option. I do think that that is the last piece of public property northbound on Indian River Drive, and it's probably about, what, a quarter of my. And it's probably about, what, a quarter of my, half a mile north of the Main Street Boat Ramp restroom. I think there is a need from time to time for a restroom in that area, not just for the fishermen, but also for the walkers and pedestrians. So I believe the location is appropriate. It's up to council, give me some direction if you want to downscale this even further.
Yeah, I'm done.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. We keep talking about this restroom. I tried to find the blueprint for the layout of it. What is the exact location? Not a parking lot. Left corner, north corner, south corner? It's not in your book unless you've got something different. $300,000, Mr. Dodd, I agree with you. Leave the gold faucets off the sink. Initially, we were building the fishpacking house. I asked this question. Why are we not putting a bathroom in that facility for the fishermen? I was told it was too expensive. Now we're going to go build a $300,000 bathroom. Initially, we would have an open-door bathroom accessible to the public on the outside of the restaurant, whether it not restaurant, the fish market. That disappeared. That was pointed out. Why are we not putting it onto the packing house? We have water out there. I like the shower that we gave the fishermen. It's really nice. It's a pipe with a little lever on it, on a pole. But there was no reason not to put it there for the fishermen. The second reason is, or the second thought I have is, every boat has a sanitation system on the boat of the fishermen coming in. It's federal. You have a holding tank, et cetera. We haven't even gotten to that yet with boats coming in. Do we have a holding tank pump-out station? We're running a marina. But here, we're going to go put $300,000, and that's because you cut the cost by eliminating the blacktop for the parking lot and a few other items. This doesn't seem feasible. A small toilet, sink, shower, right out on the pier. Find finance part of it. Fine is my money and your money, too. We use the word grant as if it's magic money that comes from nowhere. We're paying for it either way. I think there might be time to go look back to put a restroom for the fishermen into the building where they're doing the packing. And I don't see $300,000 to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak about the restroom? Yes, ma'am. Hello.
I am Holly Tanner. I am one of the owners of L.H. Tanner Construction. So we were the low, low bidder on this project, and we have been working with Frank and the city manager on this, on helping with, assisting with the value engineering. And part of the, when we had submitted our original bid, I will tell you, the plans were very expensive in terms of the construction of the, what was put on the plans, in terms of the engineering and the architecture. And we did take the time to, after the request, after he had talked with the, with, with your attorney, to make sure this was okay. We did go back and look into plans, because that's, a lot of times in our company, we end up doing what's called, like, plan-build. We look at the plans, look at the value engineering of where we would be able to cut the, the costs for being able to, from what we understood, what you wanted to have built also. So that, I just wanted to come up in front of you, and, and we really would love to be able to work with you all. So if there is some type of other thing that we need to take a look at, we would be happy to do that, too. So that's, that's understandable. And so, okay. Any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak about the restrooms at the Working Waterfront? Any further council discussion?
Real quick comment that there is a small public aspect to the restroom. Very small, though. So your, your point is well-taken that, but the, the public aspect is because there's a viewing area, and that's a public area for folks to come down and watch. The, the Krabby Bills is closed on Monday. They also close at like 4:00 or sometime in the afternoon. You can't get in, when the market closes, they're done. So you can't, you would not be able to use the restroom in the early evening hours if fishermen were going in and out. So there's a small public aspect and obligation, but I will concede that it's small. So I, I don't disagree with you. I think maybe, how about, how about, you know one of those little wooden buildings that has a half-moon?
No Clive's Maltrum.
They make them anymore?
Most of the fishermen use those all the time.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Let's get it done. Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd?
No.
Motion carries.
This leads us up to public input. Anyone from the public wish to speak about some not already on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. One, a question to do, Mayor. Would you ask our city manager? Maybe we get an update on what's going on with our docks. Two, if you're going to, as, I know it's a bathroom, I'm talking, but it's not relating to the one that's there at the market. If it's going to be open 24 hours, we have a situation at the Yacht Club, which is open 24 hours. We have an unfortunate person, I'll define it as homeless, who has been an occupant there for six to seven weeks, sleeping in the bathroom, storing his stuff in the bushes, took over a table. Now, if you're going to put a bathroom down to the north end of town, you better look into what's really going on. I spoke with our city personnel, with the police. I was told they have hands off because of federal law. This gentleman can sleep in that bathroom, do whatever he wants. I don't understand that. Maybe somebody could look into it somehow, and if you, again, I got an answer. You can't panhandle. We have that as an ordinance. I'm not mentioning a name, but there was an officer there when the gentleman is asking me for money and a cigarette. So we're panhandling. I mentioned it. That was the response. Federal law, we cannot do anything. We can let him go into all our parks. Because, the second answer that came out was, we have no place to take them that's set up for. Up north, we had motels. If there was a big problem, it was a lousy night, social service came in, they had deals with motels, then at least put them up, get them out of the weather. Again, it's a big problem. Not many people see it. But every time a boater comes in with its children, running off, off the boat, heading for the bathroom, they're finding this gentleman in the bathroom, or asking the owner of the boat, that he makes like he's helping them put the boat on the trailer. He's looking for a beer and a handout. This isn't the first time. Something has to be done. You mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we have to count all our homeless. Well, let's get some of the money from the county to help in our city with our homeless situation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Frank, you got an update on the docks?
Sure. Frank Watanabe, City Engineer. Just to give you a little update, I've been, Bojor Dock to be removed, that should start on June 5th. PCS is the contractor. They informed me today that they'll start on Monday, June 5th. Regarding the other four piers, as we talked about at the last meeting, Army Corps has submitted the documents to the National Fishery. 10 days has passed, no comments, so we're in good shape. We're waiting for a seagrass survey. We're supposed to get that completed and, and submitted this Friday. Once I have that submitted, I'll send it to St. John's and to Army Corps. Their review process, they already got the applications ready to go. They figured about another week to process it, and then we should have permits in hand. So that should take care of all the permits. We have Brothers Construction is already working on the plans. They've been submitting shop drawings, design plans to meet all the requirements, to meet existing conditions, and I've submitted those to FEMA. And FEMA, just two days ago, submitted that through the FEMA organization under the CAT-G process. So we're also in the process now to get the reimbursement started on those piers as well. So that's what we said. And so once we get started, 120 days construction.
Right. Sounds good. We're on track. And then considering about the, the bathroom down there at the Yacht Club, isn't that on a timer, Mr. Griffin? No. No, that one's not? It's not. No. And it's, it's not for a reason, because there were enorm, it was on a timer at one time. Perhaps Councilmember Kitchen remembers that. But there was an uproar about that because the fishermen who would come in there late couldn't get in the restroom. So it's not on a timer. The issue that Mr. Hocker was talking about, apparently it's a mental health issue. That's, I've heard that from some folks. So I think we have to tread lightly here. We just, I'm not, I'm not going to, and I, I don't think the police department will put us in a bad position of doing something stupid with this individual. And he has been, we have tried to get him to go to a shelter. He has refused. So yes, it's a problem. I would say the one, if he's sleeping in there overnight, that's kind of a trespassing issue. He shouldn't be in there sleeping. Now, I know the homeless have a lot of rights, because I am involved with the homeless, and should try and gear the individual towards some things. I guess I'll get with the chief, and I'll go down. When I go down there, I haven't seen this individual. Okay? When I'm down.
I haven't seen him either.
I, I have not seen him. So I'll get with the chief, and we'll see about sending somebody out. But of course, if the person is aggressive, then that is a law enforcement issue. Or if they are a threat to somebody else or to themselves, then the police do step in. But if it's just a homeless individual, and he asks, brother, can you spare a dime? That's not necessarily panhandling.
No, sir.
And I don't think the police would arrest you for that. But if you're aggressive and trying to pull in a boat and saying, hey, you got a beer or a dollar to help me, that's being aggressive, and I think law enforcement could take action on that.
The reports I have, it's not aggressiveness, it's obnoxiousness, but that's about, that's the extent of it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on some not already on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jim Sonnycab. As you know, my son and I pay for and run the Sebastian Bark Park dog site. For some reason, we've been getting all kinds of, people have the impression that the dog park's going to close.
That it's for what? I'm sorry, I missed that word.
That the dog park is going to close.
Oh, okay.
Have the impression.
Okay. And I, I just attended the Parks and Rec meeting. I want everyone to know the dog park is not going to close. There's been some rule changes and things that should make the dog park better, but the dog park is not going to close. That's just what I want to get across to everybody.
Well, if there's 70-year-olds fistfighting out there, the dog park's going to close.
Yeah, well, it's, well.
That's what I'll say, because if it, if continued.
That's what I'm saying, too.
The craziness that was going on down there, and I know there were some, a lot of things that were going on, but if that continued, that drama, if you want to call it that, between the dog owners continues, then it would have to be closed.
Well, we, you know, these, this sign being put up, people taking their personal stuff home and stuff, there's about 1,000 people that Facebook in the dog park account and all. 90% approve the, what the city's doing, and about 10%, I can't tell you what they're saying. Because it's, but, but biggest percentage of the people likes the, the new rules and what the city's doing to make the dog park a better place.
That's good to know.
I think what people need to hear is the city manager's doing everything he can to try to mitigate the problems down there, and.
Yeah.
As long as they're willing to, to assist with that process, and if two 70-year-olds get in a fistfight, then they, they should close, not the park. And we should, we should probably, the one thing that's, that may need to be done there that hasn't been done there is maybe some law enforcement, which nobody wants to do, because nobody wants to go down there and yank two 70-year-olds down to jail because they're fighting. But yeah, if, if they're doing, if they're causing a disruption, then they might need to. But I know the city manager's doing a lot of things. We've spent several sessions talking about this. He's doing a lot of things to try to mitigate the issues down there, and I, I agree. It's, it's, it's getting some positive feedback, and I hope maybe it's going to start paying back soon.
Well, I, I agree with you. We have laws for the dog park, but if you don't have any right to enforce the laws, there is no law.
Yeah, right.
There's dogs that aren't vaccinated. There's people that just don't pay attention to the, the rules. You only need to send someone there a couple of times, the word gets around, hey, someone's watching us, and Vero Beach's Dog Park, Bruce D'Ancherfield used to be the, the warden down there. He would sit there, he would give tickets. One, one woman, he kept giving her tickets, giving her tickets, she kept paying them. So then she went to court, and they banned her from the park. But you need some kind of enforcement, someone watching, someone enforcing the rules once in a while, someone just checking, because I don't care how many rules you put on the board and stuff out there. If nobody's enforcing, nobody's watching, there is no rules. And I think that's a big part of the problem is, you know, it, it's called a dog park, but it's also, it's also a people park.
Right.
Just as well as a dog park. And it's, it's not as much as the dogs, it's the people, it's a people problem in the park.
But the dogs are fine.
Yeah.
Don't leave their owners home.
If the dogs could go there by themselves, we wouldn't have these problems.
Yeah, the dogs deal along. Great. It's, it's the, okay, I'll, I'll give you an example. You know, there's the big side, the little side, and the chairs. They were putting feces on each other's chairs.
Ah.
That, you know, that, that creates, that's the people thing.
Yeah. Well, that's the thing, we are watching it, and hopefully somebody, the, the rules we initiated will take effect. You know, like I said before, there's no such thing as bad dogs, just bad dog owners.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, it's been, the park's been, we, we get people from other countries asking about the site all over United States. It's a, we get thousands of people. I mean, it, it's, dog parks are great if they're run right. Like Vero Beach has a, the city owns the property, but there's a group of people that pays for the doggy bags, pays for the mowing. They, they, they run the park.
Right.
And they used to have some of the same problems that were, and, like the swimming pools, used to be a problem. So they just took them out. Now our swimming pools, there's, somebody would cut one side, then the other side would get, so the swimming pools are creating a, half the people like them, half the people don't. People that didn't like them, their dogs get wet, get muddy, then get in a car. Dogs, other dogs love playing in them, but the swimming pools are creating a problem. So I believe by just eliminating them, took care of that problem. But, you know, that's just, I'm glad to see the city is seeing more ways of keeping it open and, you know, improving it than just shutting it down. I mean, it.
All right. All right. Thank you, sir. And I know the city manager's looking into what Vero Beach does.
Thanks.
But I think part of the problem is, what you mentioned, is that lady who got banned from Vero, she's probably at the Sebastian Dog Park now, causing those problems. So.
Well, and it is good to hear. I agree with Councilmember Dodd, that, that we need to hear about the 90% who aren't the problem. And it's not just at the dog park. Right now. Right now, we're seeing the same things happening all around. At the senior center, we've got people arguing, and it's just, in my mind, it's a sense of entitlement. People get very comfortable at the dog park, and then they think they own it, and it belongs to them, instead of seeing it as a, an amenity that we all share. And oh, by the way, we don't have to get along with each other. We can be real nasty and hateful now for some reason. That's become the norm. And that's, fortunately, 90% are still the good folks who deserve it. We just need to remind people that this is, it's not a right, a God-given right, to be allowed in the dog park or at the senior center, or even to come in this building. If you can't behave and get along with everybody, there are ways that we can fix it so you don't come back. That's all I'll say.
All right. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Going back to the dog park real quick, I wanted to let council know that, Mr. Dodd's suggestion, I contacted Jim O'Connor down in Vero Beach, and they do, in fact, lease the dog park to an organization for a minimal amount per year. And that's really the self-policing that they utilize at their dog park. And I just got this contract late this afternoon. I'll be reviewing this and perhaps report back to council about perhaps a recommendation down the line. Maybe we ought to move, City of Stewart also does that, so maybe we ought to move towards that, but I'll report back.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. All right. Brings us up to new business out of 14A, approved hazard mitigation grant application for stonecrop drainage. Mr. Griffin?
Yes. This is a application that we wish to submit for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGT, for the stonecrop drainage. This is a program that's a federal program, but the federal funds trickle down to the state, and it is ranked, or your project is ranked, under what they call the local mitigation strategy. And we have a project, we have a couple of projects on that list that have been identified that are critical that we could, we could have fixed, and one of them is a stonecrop drainage issue. I did make a typographical error in the write-up. I cited that project as number eight in your
Number nine.
in your agenda transmission. Actually, it's number nine. Sorry, I apologize for that. The, we do need the governing body board approval to apply for this. Our initial estimate, and this was a couple of years ago, was $500,000. We since have received an updated estimate from a city consultant engineering firm of $750,000. So, we will be applying for this. There's no guarantee that we will get this, this grant, obviously, but we will try to program this in our CIP for next year, in our stormwater fund for $187,500. And I think Frank has a small PowerPoint to show.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Frank Wantnaby, the city engineer, I have a quick presentation. Just want to highlight what the city manager talked about, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It is a federally funded program. It helps communities implement measures to reduce or eliminate long-term risks for people and properties from natural disasters, mainly flooding. It's run through the county emergency management. The funding is a federal fund, it goes to the state, and goes into the county pot. It goes through a program called the Local Mitigation Strategies, in which the counties and the regional bodies then identify projects, rank them, and then when there's money available through disasters, then they divvy up the money source. To correct, the project was at nine originally. We took out our, one of our projects because this money source is right now available through, it's a Matthews money that's being funneled down, so there's money now available. So, the list of had like 30 scaled down to 15, they scaled down to what we have right now. We took out one of ours because stonecrop is important, and I'll show you why. So, it's now rated as number eight. And we have a letter from the county's emergency management stating that it's eight. Stonecrop, as the city manager talked about, is a drainage installation for installing dual 60-inch pipes for about 1,700 linear feet. It's a match of 75% from the HMGP and 25% from the local. As Joe mentioned, the cost is about $750,000, and the application is due June 9th. Just real quick, oops, sorry. Just real quick, I want to show you the reason why this is so important. This is the drainage area that we have for this Sebastian Highlands, mainly the central part. Shown in green is the stonecrop drainage ditch. This entire drainage facility drains through this drainage system. And so, as you could, as you could tell, if this drainage facility in any way got clogged, blocked, or unable to flow water, this entire area of over 700 homes will then start having impacts of flooding. The ditch right now is a natural ditch. The problem with the natural ditch is got to the point where we can't get in there and maintain it. So, the shores are getting steeper, and our concern would be eventually it's going to get to the point where it's right now about eight feet deep. If it gets any more to the point where we can't get into it, and it starts to slide in, which Mother Nature will force itself to do so, then we'll have an issue. Then this ditch will then be plugged, and any storm we have will then cause impacts within this area. During Matthews, when I was driving around, we had impacts along that corridor, along the Laconia corridor, and those packet that shows you a photograph of Tulip Street, and there's about two feet of water, and this system was running. So, if you can imagine, if the system was closed, severe water would be rising up a lot faster. We do also have future projections for other retention ponds, but this is really critical in our hazard mitigation. So, that's the reason why we ranked a pipe on our list, and that's the reason why we want to move forward, and hopefully, we catch this in time to put the pipes in and to help mitigate this area. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And the stonecrop would impact up there off of Laconia and the Tulip where we were getting all the floods after Matthew, correct?
Correct.
Because then it would flow much easier if you had the five-inch pipes down there.
Exactly.
Help every, because that was really our main, I think, our problem area, off of Laconia and Rose Bush and Tulip where all the water was standing after the storm. Everything else was
Yeah. If you had dual-edged pipes, think about it like pipes in your, in your home, it's just, there's no friction, so the water flows better. The outfall structure's all set to handle the flow. We just right now need to have the pipe installed. And the reason why we haven't done so is because of the high cost.
Right. You don't got to sell me. I move approval.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Mr. Griffin, you have anything for us tonight?
Yes. Couple things, or three things, actually. The airport master plan is currently in the works by TDKA, one of our airport consultants. They are going to make a presentation to council at our next meeting on June 14th. On June 15th, the next day, in council chambers, there's a public outreach from 1 until 4, what?
Three.
Until 3 on June 15th. So, anticipate that they will be here on June 14th, giving council a presentation of the progress so far in the airport master plan update project. Timrose Construction, we saw tonight from Vince Burke that they're going to be awarded, assuming that Resolution 3 gets passed by the Board of County Commissioners, that Septic, or the sewer project, North County Sewer Project here in August. Recently, they were given the notice to proceed for the 512 paving project. So, that's, Timrose Construction also is doing the 512 paving project. That notice to proceed is 30 May with 150 days of substantial completion. So, that would take them to the end of October, to where they would be completed, substantial completion of the 512 project. Absolute completion is 180 days, so that would be obviously another month after that. So, I just wanted everyone to be aware that the 512 paving project is going to start as of 30, 30 May, and the construction period is 150 days. Memorial Day Ceremony is Monday, 29 May, 11 o'clock at our Veterans Memorial. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Nothing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes. Just to go back to the wreaths across America, I don't want to leave the impression that I am against this program. I certainly am not. What I don't want to see and what concerned me, and I think, I'm hoping that the city manager will pursue this and not take it at face value what we, how it was left tonight, because I think we can make this win. I have the phone numbers of Commander Willis, the outgoing VFW commander. I have Commander Haskins, the incoming. I have Commander Newland's phone number from the American Legion, and you need to sit down with the commander of the honor guard, all of these, and with the ladies who want to do this program. And I think it can be made a win-win. What I don't want to see is, I can't imagine us doing this ceremony, maybe we do it once, but then in the future, we're mandated to do it in the cemetery. That's not going to work. How do you get the bleachers down there? If you're moving bleachers from one spot to another, that long a distance, you're going to destroy the bleachers in a very short period of time. We don't have, we don't have seating down there, and it's a burden on the city. But there's a way to do it, and I am confident that if people look at it with an open mind, that this can happen, and it can be very nice, and we can participate and make it nice and not a burden on anyone. So, that, I'm going to leave that and see you in a couple of weeks. I'm out of town.
All right. Mr. Dodd?
Nothing.
Ms. Kitchen?
No. I don't have anything tonight.
All right. That leaves to me. I got nothing. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Have a great evening.